Okay, it is 5:33 on November 20th, 2024. I will call this meeting of the Morton County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. First up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
... the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Roar.
Here.
Tomac.
Here.
Wald. Yep, Becky is online. Zachmeyer is absent. L.
Here.
Berger.
Here.
Braun is absent. Buckley.
Here.
I am here, so everyone except Zachmeyer and Braun. All right, approval of tonight's agenda.
I move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from October 23rd.
Motion and a second minutes.
All second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right, Natalie, item number one.
So, Mr. Chairman, our first item is a review and potential approval of the long-range transportation plan for the Bismarck Mandan MPO, and I'm going to leave that to Executive Director Rachel Drula.
Good evening, chairaheads and commissioners. Thank you for your audience tonight. My name is Rachel Lukaszewski, and I represent the Bismarck Mandan Metropolitan Planning Organization. I'm here tonight to introduce the MPO's consultants, Jeremy Williams of HDR and Jason Carby of HDR, as well as the Arrive 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Arrive 2050 is a major planning document, and it assists the MPO, the area jurisdictions, and the North Dakota Department of Transportation to envision and prepare for future, the future of our transportation systems. More specifically, it helps our region to use federal transportation dollars, which are used to improve the network either through maintenance or expansion. We've been working on this project for over a year and a half, and Jeremy's presentation will provide you with first, an outline of how we prepared for the study, also how we used public input throughout the process, and finally, what overarching goals, development themes, and grant projects we hope to pursue upon possible adoption of this master plan. In conclusion, the MPO is requesting that the board consider a motion to recommend approval of the plan to the county commission, and that approval would be by resolution. The MPO advertised this meeting as a public hearing, and I would be happy to stand for any questions after Jeremy's presentation. Thank you for hearing my introduction. Jeremy, are you online?
Yep, I am here. Are you able to hear me okay?
We are.
Better than ever.
Perfect. All righty, and then if I'm able to request permission to share screens, do I need to request it on my end?
I think we're taking care of that. Just a second.
Okay, sure.
All right, it looks like you're now in presenter mode, so you can share screen, I think.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And then with that, we can get started. So, yeah, my name is Jeremy Williams, and I'm part of the study team along with Jason Carby, who assisted the MPO with the development of Arrive 2050, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to speak with you today and give you a background of the draft plan and overview of the contents. Aside that, the agenda is pretty brief. Besides that overview, we can then move into a session to answer any questions you might have over the draft plan. So, to start things off, we can have a look at the contents of the plan. So, as you can see, the 11 chapters there, with the first several chapters kind of setting the stage with some of the background, the goals and objectives of Arrive 2050, and some of the public engagement activities that were conducted, before moving into a description of some of the technical analysis that comprised the plan, before then moving into the development of different strategies, project alternatives, as well as a recap of the historic funding revenues that the MPO has received help with transportation, as well as an estimation of future revenues, which would then inform that Chapter Nine, that Fiscally Constrained Plan, which is kind of the meat of the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, if you will, and then those final two chapters kind of relate to some of the federal regulations, and then they how Arrive 2050 aligns with federal and local and state planning regulations. So, kicking things off with a little bit of background on the Metropolitan Transportation Plan and some of the MPO's core products. The MTP, as you can see, is one of those core products, and it's updated every five years per federal guidelines, and it has to look out a minimum of 20 years. In the case of Arrive 2050, as you could guess by the title, it looks out 25 years to that future year 2050. And Rachel did an excellent job kind of describing the plan, and so to kind of recap that, it again addresses those current and exist, or current and future anticipated needs and issues facing multimodal transportation within the region, and then comes up again with that fiscally constrained list of projects and strategies to address those, those issues and needs. So, the goals, objectives, and performance measures, these are those components of the plan that help align the vision for Arrive 2050 with federal planning guidelines, with the long-range planning activities of North Dakota Department of Transportation, but also develop those performance measures which can be used to evaluate the plan's progress into the future. And so, out of that goals and objectives development were the identification of the eight goal areas within Arrive 2050. So, looking at safety and how to improve safety within the region, not only for vehicular users but non-motorized users, so bicyclists, pedestrians, so on and so forth, looking at how to support the economic vitality of the region, so things like freight and those interconnections between transportation and land use. Resiliency looks at improving the resiliency of the system in the face of natural and man-made events that impact the system functioning. Efficiency and reliability, their focuses on the, the operations of the multimodal transportation system, whereas maintenance kind of looks toward balancing the need to expand the system to accommodate future growth while also maintaining the condition of transportation infrastructure that exists today within the region. The forward-thinking goal area focuses on potential opportunities to embrace technological solutions that could be leveraged to, to improve transportation on a region-wide basis. And then active transportation, again, as I said, some, a multimodal plan in nature, so looking towards bicyclists, pedestrians, transit, and other users of the system, and then finally equity kind of comprises that last goal area of Arrive 2050. Public engagement was ongoing throughout Arrive 2050. There were several different approaches to getting the public involved in the plan and soliciting feedback, including a project website, which house updates, as well as a series of online public meetings and surveys that invited residents and workers within the region to kind of give their thoughts and opinions on transportation, as well as a series of meetings with stakeholders, a steering committee that was developed as part of Arrive 2050, and then finally, some regular meetings with the MPO's technical advisory committee and the policy board to kind of make sure that they're in loop with everything going on and get project updates. And really, the key takeaway with the public engagement was focus on trying to have events throughout the region and kind of get out and meet people where they're at. So, as you can see, there was an open house held at that YMCA in Bismarck, as well as an event at the Art in the Park Festival in Mandan in July. So, Arrive 2050 was definitely successful in kind of getting out in the community and seeking that input from a range of different audiences. So, then we can move into a quick recap of some of those technical analyses I mentioned earlier. So, this Bismarck Mandan MPO chapter kind of provides a detailed community profile that looks at different socioeconomic and demographic trends, and so really establish that story of how the region came to be and kind of looks, you know, looks in the past and kind of tracks those trends through the future to help inform the under, or the underlying baseline transportation system. And so, further analysis of the baseline transportation system sought to look at how the multimodal system operates today and provide that baseline scenario for evaluating future growth scenarios within the region. And so, as you can see, there were several components to the existing multimodal system analysis, so looking at topics such as safety, traffic operations, all the way through regional connections, so things like aviation and intercity bus services, and then finally asset condition, mainly the pavement and bridges that exist within the MPO region today. Some of the key highlights from that baseline transportation system analysis, from a safety perspective, look to understand locations where crashes happen frequently, where more severe crashes are occurring, but also safety impacts on non-motorized users, as well as other key crash trends, and help kind of inform potential strategies to address these safety deficiencies and also help program future safety revenues. Similarly, traffic operations sought to understand where the congestion is occurring today, and as you can see from this map, there's a little bit of that peak hour congestion that occurs on a daily basis, mainly on those higher-volume arterial roads. And so, the main understanding here is that under, you know, future growth, if the roadway were not to, or the roadway network were not to be, you know, improved in any substantial way, that you would expect this congestion that occurs today to continue on into the future and potentially worsen. So, here is a quick summary, kind of by those component areas you saw earlier about some of those big picture existing system issues, and I think by far, the big theme that we saw, and this is something that's come up in past planning activities and past metropolitan transportation plans, but really are those barriers to cross-area travel. So, within the city of Bismarck, that's that north-south mobility, whereas in the city of Mandan, it's more of the east-west mobility that does cause some, some troubles with the existing transportation system. So, after establishing that baseline scenario, then we look towards future growth within the MPO region. So, looking mainly at households and job growth, and overall, we saw about a 40% increase through the year 2050, and as I mentioned, you know, that existing transportation system to accommodate that future growth would put kind of some further stress on the system that exists today. And so, this map, you can see kind of that allocation of jobs very similar to the, the household map you had just seen. But here, this map is a result of the application of those growth inputs into the travel demand model, which is a series of complicated mathematical procedures that then takes all that growth and kind of disperses it across the region. And so, as you see in this map, that a lot of that forecasted growth that is expected to occur commensurate with that 40% increase in jobs and households is going to add a lot of traffic onto that arterial network and could cause further congestion issues, again, under that assumption of no major improvements made to the transportation network as it exists today. Another notable outcome of those, the travel demand model, the summary statistics, were those, these bottom two that you're seeing here, the average trip length and that 8% increase through the year 2050, while at the same time, the average travel speed would be expected to decline about 11%. So, basically, in the future, people are driving further, they're traveling at lower travel speed, meaning that their trips are overall taking longer. So, now, we have those technical analyses that set the stage for the issues and needs. This MTP Strategies, Trends, and Drivers chapter then looks at different solutions to addressing those issues and kind of starts that transition to thinking kind of in the future and coming up with those various projects that are included as in the Arrive 20, or Arrive 2050, excuse me, universal alternatives, which you are seeing here. And so, some of these alternatives have come from maybe previous planning studies, but were also, also came out of those technical analyses that we had walked through earlier, and these include a wide range of different types, as you can see, the, that northern bridge crossing, things like filling in the grid and future growth areas, new overpasses, new over, or new interchanges, excuse me, and even, you know, within the complex of Mandan, McKenzie Extension, you see there kind of in the southern part of the map. So, once we have that universe of alternatives identified, the next step was to look at the, the funding ecosystem of the, of the MPO and kind of understand how future revenues can be leveraged and matched with those different alternatives you had just seen, and kind of come up with that fiscally constrained plan. And one of the, the key takeaways from the, the assessment of the MPO's funds were that under the assumed annual growth and revenues of 2% compared with the, the increased cost of inflation with, with the projects in, in the future, that results in that longer-term purchasing power for the MPO declining. So, there is a little bit of constraint there in terms of the future funds. And so, basically, kind of combining all those together, we have the Fiscally Constrained Plan, which does again include a range of different project types, be it some expansion projects, preservation, some active transportation trails, crossing, things like that. And so, basically, this map here is, is taking the forecasted funds that the MPO is expected to receive through 2015, basically matching projects that best fit the priorities of the MPO and its member jurisdictions and addressing kind of the most pressing transportation issues of today. And so, kind of to round out the document, again, is a quick recap of how the plan is locally tailored but still satisfies federal and state planning regulations and, you know, is again compliant with those federal regulations. And so, yeah, with that, that would conclude the presentation, so at this point, we can open it up to any questions you may have.
Any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I think a lot of this has come up upon funding sources, federal, state, local, and that's kind of up near most time, isn't it? It's pretty hard to, you know, you can plan your projects, but it's pretty hard to plan the funding. Would that be a correct statement?
Commissioner Roar, I'll take that question. You're correct. The funding that we project is never guaranteed to us. Typically, within the MPO, our federal highway transportation bill might be five to six years out. So, Congress gives us a guarantee of sorts with the highway transportation bill, but once that bill lapses, or if there's not a continuing resolution, you're correct, that funding is not there. However, with regards to this plan and for the commission's notice, the federal government also requires us to plan for future needs, so that if and when that funding does come available, even if it's not as much as we were expecting, we'll still have an idea of what the needs are for the community, and we'll have a starting point to decide how best to spend that fund.
And you're still in competition with other areas within the state, you're right.
So, currently, the way that the federal funds are allocated, there has been a change within the last few years, and at the MPO level, the federal funding that was or is allocated to MPOs is in two separate pots. The first pot is for MPOs that have a population greater than 200,000, and that MPO in North Dakota is in Fargo. They just reached that status, so they're called a TMA. The other three MPOs in Grand Forks, Bismarck Mandan, and Minot, which is called Central Dakota, they share the other side of that funding, and this is by federal regulation. So, the money that is allocated for us is then subdivided at DOT, and DOT does give us an estimate yearly on how much money we might see in, in various different grant funds. So, although we are never guaranteed the funding, DOT has always been a very fair partner to work with, and we do see projects annually coming through our MPO grant programs. That said, the overall funding is shared with two other MPOs and the municipalities in those locations.
I'll explain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So, then Natalie, the ask is...
Public hearing.
Okay.
So, we did advertise this as a public hearing.
Sure, that's right.
And we can stand for any questions if the public has those as well.
Okay, perfect. Okay, well, then I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Second call for the hearing. Third and final call, and I will close the hearing. So, now...
So, chairaheads, there is a resolution in your packet that was provided by the MPO. I didn't change the wording because it's adequate. So, the ask would be a recommendation to County Commission to adopt the plan by resolution. I believe we are second to last or last.
Last planning commission.
Yeah, last planning commission among the jurisdictions in the metro.
Anybody like to make a motion?
Well, the motion would be to recommend the MPO proposal plan here to the County Commission that we approved the plan as presented.
That the county would adopt the plan as presented.
Then I'll make the motion that the county adopt the plan as presented.
Second. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason and Jeremy.
This is in the southwest quarter of Section 6, township 139 North, Range 85 West. The applicants are Robert and Tina Grade. This is located north of 37th Street, 37th. This is the New Salem Interchange, that's the ETA, so it's about a mile and a half northwest of the ETA. The current zoning for everything in that area is agricultural. The future land use designation is agricultural. They have a 40-acre piece there, so this 40 acres, and they would like to break off two residential lots, that would be two acres each, so their residual would be over 35 acres. They don't have to rezone that. That would make the fourth buildable lot in that quarter section, which complies with our policy 1.1.2 in the long-range plan. So, pretty straightforward, just two acre lots with the utility easement and the right-of-way for the road. The house that is on the parent parcel does have electric and Missouri West Water Service, so that can be extended to these lots as well. They would have a shared approach. The sightline along the road is good, but we like to conserve approaches where we can, so requested that they put in a shared approach. So, I can take any questions. Staff is recommending approval, and I can take any questions.
Any questions for Natalie?
And I will say, I got a revised plat that had an access easement for the shared approach, and I didn't, I didn't put it in the packet, my apologies, so this would be if accepted with a shared access easement. Is it?
Yeah, we have, we have two pages.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, any questions for Natalie? And Natalie, if you can just make sure Becky doesn't have any... I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for grade subdivision. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Second call for the hearing.
Can I ask Mark a question?
Yeah.
Mark, can I ask you, so the road is going to go where that little square is on the, so they won't have to worry, we won't have to worry about maintaining any of that, the county? That's going, that's not going to be their...
It's a private...
It's a private drive, that's why, thank you.
It's an access easement. Just that little square is an access easement.
Okay, third and final call for the hearing. And I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, your wishes.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to recommend approval of the plot, the final plot of the short-term, short-form subdivision known as grade subdivision, and a zoning map amendment from agricultural residential, as a subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Plan, Morton County Land Use Code, and conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan.
Second. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item number three.
So, our next item is the Goyther Third subdivision. This is in Fort Rice. I won't read the legal because I think you all know where this is. We actually, this should look familiar. We looked at this, and County Commission had approved this subdivision in July. Since that time, so just to recap, the applicant has 15 very small lots in this block. He's looking to combine them all, vacate the alley in between those lots to make one buildable residential lot. So, last time we had looked at this, so the neighbors that own these three lots, they have a shed partly in the alleyway. Their fence goes to the edge of the alleyway on both sides. There is a power pole, Morgantua has a power pole here, that the neighbors had paid to get that electrical hookup, and so the neighbors were not terribly happy about that arrangement where the applicant would take this alleyway and the neighbors would take that alleyway. And so, in an effort to maintain relations with the neighbors, the applicant is asking for a lot in which neither of those alleyways gets vacated at the present time, just the alleyway between his own lots would get vacated. So, that puts the, puts him in the position of having a lot that is just below our 65,000 square foot minimum. So, the proposal is for a lot that is 63,012 square feet, so very close to our acreage minimum. Staff is recommending approval of this change, even though it's less than our minimum, because there's nowhere else to get acreage from here. If at some point in the future those alleys are vacated, the applicant would, you know, if it's strictly half and half between that property and the neighbors, the applicant would have enough acreage to meet the minimum. And the fact that it is bringing 15 non-conforming lots into greater, or I should say, less non-conformity and make it a buildable lot, staff is suggesting that's a preferable scenario to letting it sit out there with 15 lots all separated. So, staff's recommending approval, but I can take any questions, and we can have a discussion.
Are there any questions for Natalie? Are there any questions for Natalie?
So Natalie, we really can't do anything about the garage that's not parked, that's not built on.
So I guess because that alleyway doesn't function really as an alley.
Okay.
I don't know, I mean certainly, you don't run into this scenario in a road that you use, because right-of-way, if someone started building in a right-of-way that you use, you'd say, what in the world is going on? And you would tell them to get it out. I think the fact that it's been there for so long, I guess I don't know what our situation would be to tell them to remove it, you know, it being a right-of-way. So, I mean, it is our right-of-way. It is county right-of-way. So we could do something different here. There is a fence up, again, you know, along the far side of the alley on both sides, so... So the fence is acting, is acting like the alley is, you know, belongs to the neighboring property owner, that's how it's acting. So we, yeah, I guess we'd have to have a question, I don't know that our state's attorney would have a good answer for that either, until it would go through some kind of case, enforcement case, you know, that the courts decide.
So you're saying that the fence is for the neighbor's property, not the one that we're working with?
Yeah, it's the neighbor's fence. Okay. It's the neighbor's fence.
Not the best situation.
No, not a great situation. And staff did try. I did try for a time to ask the neighbors, you know, it's sort of a sticky situation. I spent some time trying to be a neutral party and, you know, asked the neighbors kind of what they felt like might be an equitable type of situation, you know, to work out. And sounded like they could get behind the idea of a partial, or like, you know, where the, that this one might be part of this lot, but then they could have an access easement to access the power pole anytime they want. But then it was dragging on, dragging on, and I said we really need to have an answer as to whether they're going to, you know, sign a plat to agree to the property line or not. And they did not get back to me by the deadline that I set for them. So I don't know that they are, I guess it's undefined what their interest is in participating in this plating process.
So Mr. Chairman, one more question. So then how can we make sure that they don't put another building?
In the right-of-way.
In the right-of-way.
Well, and that's a shed.
Will it come here?
I should say it's a shed.
Okay. Well, no, I just said a building, so...
Oh, sure. If we noticed that they, well, if it's a true structure, a permanent structure, they would have to get a building permit for it. And so if they did not get a building permit for it, then we would take an enforcement action to say you need to remove that from the right-of-way. So I think that, and this one too, I don't know what kind of a funding, again, I don't know that this is a structure. I think it's a, I mean, it's a shed, more or less, so it's, it could get moved, you know?
Well, I just want to make sure that nothing else gets put in.
Goes in there.
Goes in there.
Yeah.
Natalie, can you switch back to Becky?
Yes.
Sorry, we couldn't hear you, Becky.
Okay, I guess I'm not saying anything, am I? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you. Oh, okay. I had no question.
Okay. Thanks, Becky.
Sure.
Any other questions for Natalie? Okay, not seeing any, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak, please come up to the podium and state your name.
I guess there's definitely questions I could ask.
Yeah, if you could still, come up to the podium, please.
Hi, so my name is Lisa Dillman, and I live down in Fort Rice. And I guess I have some questions for Natalie. Okay, so gardener's land here, and you say there's one owner here?
It's a, I don't know, husband and wife, it's a...
There's two parties.
Two parties, yeah.
Okay. And so they really couldn't build anything because they don't have the proper acreage.
Correct.
So I guess, I don't know, to me it's like, I think that Chad should get the right-of-way. You know what I mean? Because they don't have enough anyway. They wouldn't be able to build at all. I don't know. I see they're living in their camper, and yeah, it's probably not a good situation. But I guess that's the only questions I had.
Second call for the hearing. Third and final call, and I will close the hearing. So, any thoughts from the commission?
I'll move to approve, recommend approval of the plat of the short-form subdivision on Grant III subdivision, which includes vacation of one alleyway, as the subdivision reduces non-conformity of the sub-year properties and advised by the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
All second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I do have one. So that right-of-way then, who pays the tax, who's paying the taxes on it?
Nobody.
Nobody. That's all right-of-way, so we don't have to worry about...
Right.
Okay. Okay. Things come to me as I'm sitting here thinking.
So Natalie, there's an approved plat out there, but it was never recorded?
Correct. Yeah, it was totally approved. This is already zone residential, so it didn't need a zone change, it's just the subdivision. And it was a significant enough change, you know, it going from conforming to non-conforming that I wanted to bring it back. And I think County Commission should also just formally, you know, approve or not.
So in approving this, does the other, is the other one null and void then, or is it whichever one gets recorded?
Yeah, it would be, it would be...
Dang it, Mark, I was going to ask you!
Yeah, it would be whichever one, I mean, I would say now that this is approved, this is the most current version of the thing, so we're not going to record the other one.
I would say you would do it as proper and revised.
Yeah, as revised.
As revised.
Right.
Right.
Okay. And part of my question, I think maybe, was if something changed between now and recording and those adjacent landowners...
Changed their mind.
Changed their mind, or got in touch with you, which it doesn't sound like they're going to, but if they did...
I don't think so, yeah. I mean, because technically, the way you would do this is you would split the right-of-way exactly in half. And then they don't, they have nothing to say about it really, I mean, because they're getting their half. But then the question would be, okay, well, their fence is now on this applicant's property, and in order to enforce getting that off, you have to take a legal action, and it's just, you didn't want to have to get into that mess, so...
So the fence right now is not on their property?
Correct. It's in the county right-of-way, for the most part.
So it's not their fence, then, is it? Or how do we...
You know, when we've had this question come up before, you know, if you, that's their, it is their property, it is their thing, you know, the fence is their thing, you know, so like if you take it out...
How old is the fence?
It can be, I think it's very old.
Well, they don't pay taxes on it, that's the other question.
It's a check, man.
Sure. I mean, it doesn't matter, I guess I'm just kind of, if we're worried about where the fence is, there's a fence that somebody constructed that's not on those people's property.
It's not on their property, yeah, exactly. That would be something that someone can deal with besides us, I think.
Okay, that's all I have.
Neighborhood, neighborhood things.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, item number four.
Okay, so this next one is two, it is two separate subdivisions, but because they're still close together, we're calling them Defender One and Two. And they're coming in as one subdivision, but we may want to make separate motions for them. So this is the Defender One and Two subdivisions. One is in the southwest quarter of 15, and the other is a southwest quarter of 14, both in Township 139 North, Range 83 West. So we have Defender One is here, Defender Two is here. This is a zoning map, this is the interchange on 83.
Exit 144.
Yeah, I never, I never know what the exits are. Exit 140, if that's easier for natives, Warren County natives. So we have commercial up here, this all is slated to remain agricultural. In the future land use, this was slated to turn into industrial, but everything down here was residential. There is a gas pipeline that runs through, kind of to the north of that section line, and that does run through the existing Covash subdivision. So just for awareness that that is there. So this is the first one, this is the more westerly one. This is 22 acres. There's an existing approach here, they would access off of 83. This is kind of difficult terrain, we wouldn't really want them to access off of 139 unless they had to. There is water, Missouri West Water at the farmstead just to the west of this, so it's a little ways, but conceivably they could extend that to this subdivision. So this is Defender Two, this is the more easterly one. Missouri West Water, again, serves Covash subdivision, which is about 1,500 feet away. So again, if they want to extend it that far across the road, they could get water here. Terrain here, this is all kind of a cooley on this side, it doesn't get flat or accessible till you get over here. But there is a bit of land here that could accommodate a house and an approach. So there's the aerial. Yeah, so about there.
There is an area to the west also.
Yeah, this.
The other side too.
Yeah, like this?
No.
Oh.
Right in there.
In here?
That's my spot, yeah.
Okay. So this is 12, a little more than 12 acres. So we've been out there, Mark and I both, and it looked like there's at least a spot, maybe two spots, that they could put a house and get an approach in there in a safe location. So staff is recommending approval of both of these for short-form subdivision and rezoning from ag to residential. And I can take any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Natalie?
So it should be okay with Western Plains Public Health and those limited areas for sewer?
Yeah, they can put, you know, septic on more than 13% grade, but there was, it looked to be enough space, you know, for them to find a location for a structure and a septic up there.
Okay.
It's, I guess, it's hard to kind of gauge the scale of this, because most, lots of times we look at lots that are two acres and one acre, this is 12 acres, so the part that's buildable is probably roughly, you know, a couple, three acres, so...
Okay, not seeing any, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for this item. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Second call for the hearing. Third and final call, and I will close the hearing. Thoughts, motions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the final plat of the short-form subdivision known as Defender One subdivision, and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential, as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of Morton County Land Use Code, and conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan.
Second. Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. So Defender One is approved, need a second motion for Defender Two.
I would move to recommend approval of the final plat of the short-form subdivision known as Defender Two, and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential, as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code, and conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. That's it?
That's it. I was just going to say, I'm going to probably aim to do our whole public hearing, the plan thing for January, even though weather can be unpredictable, but that's what I'm going to aim for for now.
Thanks, Natalie.
Yep.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, second?
Motion and a second, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.